The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:02. And if the Secretary please call roll.
Kendra Barberina is here, Dennis Sabolsky.
Here.
Bob Ostendorf.
Here.
John Itzel.
Here.
Bob Dorshavitt.
Here.
Keith Postel.
Here.
Bill Pratt.
Here.
And do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda as submitted?
Motion to approve. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the agenda as submitted, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And the approval of the August 19th minutes as submitted.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the minutes of August 19th as submitted, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There are, is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none. We have no public hearing tonight, no new business, no old business, so we'll move directly to item eight, miscellaneous business and communication, the planning and zoning monthly report from July. So questions, comments?
Just wanted to say thank you Laura for highlighting the changes. That's really helpful.
Okay, if there's no questions or comments, is there a motion to receive and file?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we receive and file the planning and zoning monthly report for July of 2020.
Is there support? Okay, move by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Itzel to receive and file the July monthly report, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now we move on to 8B, the master plan presentation and discussion. So I will turn that over to Ms. Howell.
Thank you. Evening Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'd like to go through some demographic statistics as an update to where the township currently is at. In relation to, on the screen here is the 2015 master plan. And then after talking a little bit about demographics, move into land use and how that's changed in the last five years. So on the screen right now, this is the population change from the 60s. And as you can see, there was a swell of new residents in the 70s and 80s. And then in 2010, there was a slight loss of population. And actually since 2010, there's been an additional loss of another 430 residents. That's a 2018 figure, the latest available. So although the population has declined slightly, SEMCOG is projecting that in 2045, we will have slightly increased to just over 30,000. So the projection is that it will slowly grow. And that's similar to what we're seeing in Wayne County in general, and also Southeast Michigan, that the population is expected to slowly increase. Certain communities are expected to grow at a larger rate. So for instance Canton is expected to increase at a much higher rate, and also Northville Township is. Something to keep in mind. I'm going to move on to figure seven, which discusses educational attainment. And these figures here are from 2012. And really, these percentages have not changed very much. If anything, education levels have slightly increased in the township. So looking at the 2008 figures, the percentage that, of those who did not graduate high school, has dropped a bit from this 4%. And those with graduate and professional degrees has risen by a couple of percents from this 2012 figure. So we are seeing a slight increase, but overall, has stayed very similar. Figure eight in the master plan discusses the population, and the labor force and employment rates. This has stayed about the same, relatively stable. Of course, it's not including any impacts from COVID this past year, but about 60% aren't employed. And one thing that the current master plan doesn't really discuss is the number of businesses, and the daytime population that the township sees. So that's something that we're adding. So in the township, there's over 1,100 businesses. And the average daytime population for the weekday in 2018 was 36,000. So, you know, that's almost 10,000 more than our regular residential population. So you can see that we are an employment center in the region. I'm going to move to figure 12, which discusses the annual household income. The annual income has actually decreased just slightly. So in 2012, the median income was 86, and now it's 84. This could be attributed to, as we'll discuss next, the aging of the community, and that likely a number of individuals have retired. But this is, 84 is still significantly larger than the county and Southeast Michigan as a whole. And for age distribution, in 2000, the median age was 39. And in 2018, that number has increased to 45 and a half. That's a number that's older than the city of Plymouth, and Northville Township, Canton, and Southeast Michigan. The median age is 38. I think I have another. You can see this shows the current 2018 statistics. Northville Township is comparable. Though over the past 20 years, you know, this has risen. Also regarding the age, since 2010, so in the past 10 years, the cohort of residents that are 18 years or younger, so school-aged children, school-aged individuals, that number has decreased by about 10%. But then the number of individuals that are 65 and older in the community has risen by about 27%. So we are seeing that kind of demographic shift. Although SEMCOG is projecting that in the next 15 years, there will be a slight increase in school-aged children. But I think, you know, this kind of shift, it's important to acknowledge, and the fact that planning for families, and to make sure that the community is sustainable, is an important part of the master plan. And then figure 15 discusses changes in the number of housing units. So since 2010, we've only gained about 100 and odd units. This doesn't include the recent projects, which, you know, over the past year and a half, is just over 200 additional units. And that does not include the proposed multifamily for the courthouse apartments. So that would be another 88 units on top of that.
This includes other apartments, right?
Yes. Yes, all housing units. So not just single family.
The number was 9,000. Maybe 9,000, single-family homes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah. That sounds about right. And then in terms of owner occupied versus renter, these numbers have stayed about the same. The township is at about 81% owner occupied. You can see from 2000, and then 2010, it was pretty consistent at 83. And then renter occupied throughout the past 20 years has remained, it's about 16 now. And then that small, like 2% difference is the vacancy rate. So here's a comparison of the 2008 figures. So you can see, the green represents owner occupied, the blue is renter occupied, and then the red is the vacancy. And how it compares to the surrounding communities, the township actually has a very high percentage of owner occupied, and a reduced amount of vacancy, in terms of residential vacancy. And this is pretty dramatic when it's compared to Southeast Michigan, you know, 20% difference. And then I wanted to touch on the dwelling units by structure. So in 2012, this is showing that about 70% of all residential units were single family. And then another 24% were multiple family. And then this, the small 5% here is a mobile home. This has changed slightly. This is a graphic that shows this in a different way, where the circles are proportionate to the housing stock. So the large blue here, at almost 73%, is detached, single-family. And then we have duplex, apartment units with three or four, or these could be attached condos as well. This green represents five to nine units, and then 10 to 19. And you can barely see, this is 20 to 50 units, 50 units plus, and then this represents the mobile home. And you think, we'll also be showing in the master plan, based on the, this won't be census data, but it will be data that we have acquired at the township over the years, over the past several years, the square footage of new construction homes for single family. And just from, you know, what I've seen so far, it's about 3,000 is the average square And then going to figure 19, this is the housing value for owner occupied units. The median home value in 2012 was 2,000, or 247,000. So, you know, just shy of 250. And in 2018, that number has climbed to 295. So just shy of 30, or 300, excuse me. So that has been an increase of about 50,000 in home values for owner occupied. I believe it's the assessed value, the SEB. Then next, I wanted to share this table and graphic here. So this is comparing the land use in the township in terms of the 2015 acreage versus the 2020 acreage for different existing land use categories. So this isn't zoning, and this isn't what it's planned to be, but it's how the land is currently used today. So there's agricultural, undeveloped, single-family, multifamily, mobile home, office, commercial. And then we have the technology and research, industrial, parks and institutional uses, and then recreation and open space. And then you can see in these two columns whether or not that acreage has increased or decreased, and then both in terms of the actual amount of acres, but also the percent, just to give that more of a comparison. And really, the largest change has been the decrease in undeveloped land, and moving that into the technology and research. This has grown by 163%, largely attributed to the development along the MITC corridor. But we've also seen a bit of a loss of open space, and a slight increase in commercial, really no change in office or mobile home, and a slight increase in single family. And then this graphic here shows the different land uses by color, and the proportion of the circle corresponds to the amount of acreage. So you can see, single family is the predominant land use in the township. The, this green color here is the recreation and open space, and this darker purple is industrial. I think it really kind of highlights the smaller multifamily and smaller amount of commercial that the township has for its size. And then also the rather significant amount of institutional land uses that we have. And then of course, this gray is the undeveloped or agricultural lands that just over 650 acres are remaining in the township. So that-
As of 2020?
Correct.
And what would you guess the agricultural is of that? Probably three acres?
Mm-hmm. Minimal, correct, yes, yes. So this, there have been some significant changes to the land use, and I think this and the demographics will help inform our future land use, and if there are any other areas that we want to make sure that we're planning for the next 15, 20 years. So that concludes the presentation for the demographics and the existing land use. Happy to take questions at this time. We'll be continuing the master plan discussion throughout this fall, and we'll be presenting to the Board of Trustees in October, some of this background information as well.
I have a question Laura.
Yeah.
With the 2020 census going on right now, when would that data be available, and how will that be incorporated into this plan?
Yeah, so the 2020 census data is very valuable. There might be some available starting next year, but it really just depends on how fast they can roll it out. So we'll be, the information, or the data that's gathered in here is either from the 2018 or 2019 ACS, American Community Survey. And once, once the 2020 data is available, the township could always do just like a cursory review to see if it has significantly changed to those numbers. But since, since we are using the 2018 and 19 in some cases, I don't think it will be that dramatic of a change. But then certainly when the plan needs to be updated in 2025 fully again, you know, having, having that census data will be valuable.
Thank you.
Laura, other than the last slide which deals with the comparison to the current situation, everything else is over at the prior 10-year period, so what lessons, how would you summarize the changes?
Well, I think it's, it's very clear that the township has a strong, single-family residential base, which supports the tax dollars, and that there's also an important business climate that you can tell with the daytime population, that is important for the tax base, providing, as I discussed, with the square footage, that's around 3,000 for the typical home that's being built today. Making sure that the township is providing different housing types to attract like various demographics for the community, to make it sustainable, I think is an important lesson. And also in the, the reduction in the undeveloped land, we're nearing the point where it's almost completely built out. So we're either be looking at very strategic redevelopment and fill, or preserving those existing spaces that we have left.
I think it's difficult. I mean, you can see where we're getting to be an older community. So Margate, for example, is going to focus on young families because of the proximity to the schools.
Right.
But I think it's difficult for a planning commissioner, or commission, to say, well, no, you can't build high-end homes that are running $800,000, $900,000, that we've seen in other areas, because those are typically marketed to empty nesters, or very few people that have young children will be moving in those kinds of homes. So what control does, does the planning commissioner through the master plan have toward perhaps attracting more younger people? Or does that just happen naturally as the population ages out, and hopefully new, younger families move in?
Well, there are certain things that municipalities can do to kind of incentivize and encourage that type of development. As you can see here, there's, there's the distinction between single family and then the multifamily. But between, between a detached, single-family, traditional home and an apartment complex, there's a wide range of different housing typologies that are still very small-scale in nature, and can fit in with a typical neighborhood fabric, or even on the periphery of neighborhoods, that currently, you know, the township zoning regulations don't really account for. And many municipalities are going through this process of considering how to integrate that into the zoning, because they have traditionally been left out. So that's the planning term that I'm sure you've heard of, the missing middle housing, where it has anything from duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes, and, you know, townhomes, to live-work units, and even carriage houses and accessory dwelling units, converting your garage as a secondary living space for a family member. Those type of things are all examples of, of current policies that municipalities are looking at incorporating as a way to encourage the sustainable framework for the community.
Have you seen, I've seen in the past commuting times, you know, where people, how far they commute, is there any data available? It would be, to me anyway, interesting to see how many people that live in the township actually work in the township.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to, you know, working in other communities.
Yeah, that's something that we can look into. There is, there is data available on that.
Because when you talk, I mean, to add to that, when you talk about the daytime population?
Yeah.
I mean, there's got to be, there's people leaving and people coming. How do you, how do you calculate that? Is there people working at home, there are people that are leaving the community during the daytime, and people that are coming into the community? How do they possibly get that data?
Uh-
Who collects that data? SEMCOG?
SEMCOG uses it, but it is, it is the ACS, the American Community Survey, so it's a branch of the census, it's the government. I believe they do it by your, your tax filing, so your place of residence versus your place of work. We will include some information about that. Are there other questions or thoughts?
Well, the thought is, why should we be concerned about the size of the houses or the general population? I mean, builders come in here all the time, developers, and they do what makes sense for them. And why should we be encouraging, well, this kind of development or that kind of development? What do we know? You know, we don't know anything, other than spread it around as much as possible. And I don't see the logic in that. I think, you know, if we have things that make restrictions on development, then that should be concerned. But, you know, I'm just not, I question why we're even thinking that, well, we have to have this amount, and then this amount, and size-wise, it's-
So-
The only, the only time that would be a concern is if, over a period of time, everything was shrinking down, and you were losing ground to the neighboring areas, you know, and you were, you're dying, you know?
Well, it's important, I think, for every community to, to try to remain as competitive as possible, because there is a lot of mobility in society today. And I think having a diverse base, just like in many things, the more you diversify, the more stable you can be over time. And the regulations that I was mentioning about allowing for some of those other types of potential housing, wouldn't, wouldn't be to exclude other types of housing, but just to formally allow for that to, to be an option, as currently, you know, it's not provided for in the code, in, in certain areas where that makes sense. So that, that is a possibility for a developer down the road, because they may look at our code and say, well, this isn't allowed, you know, it's an uphill battle, I'm going to go to the city of Plymouth where I can do this instead. And developers certainly do, you know, research and make the decisions that make financial sense to them, but they are making those decisions at, at a given point in time. And that, at one point then, they are selling the development and walking away. So their, their concern is not necessarily the long-term, but the current, the current, you know, status. In reference to the square footage also, when we think about having an aging community, and maybe individuals who are looking to downsize, or only want to be here for a part-time of the year, you know, that becomes maybe a difficulty or a drawback, whereas, you know, maybe it's easier to relocate to a neighboring community such as Northville, where they could have a smaller place that's taken care of. So just being competitive and keeping those things in mind, I think is very healthy.
I think the key is being competitive at many levels, too.
Personally, I think the largest control on that whole issue is how much land you have that's actually, can be developed. And we don't have a lot, to be quite honest with you. And when, when somebody looks at a piece of land, and I'm not a developer, so I don't know, but, you know, they're, they're looking at, how do I, how do I maximize that piece of land for, you know, for return? That's, because that's what they're in the business for. And if you don't have a lot of pieces of land that, that can work like that, it's naturally going to restrict what developments you have, and what, what developments they're interested in actually doing. Because, you know, they have, they all have niches, they all have places, things that they are particularly good at, and, you know, maybe we don't have land masses that they're, they're particularly good at. And so I think- And so I think some of that is out of our control because we're running out of land to develop.
Will the, anywhere in the master plan, will it ever show how many acres that are residential versus industrial versus commercial? Do we ever see that breakdown? I think I saw it somewhere some time back.
Yes. Well, this right here is showing the proportion of acreage.
Okay.
For the different land uses. It's in a bubble diagram as opposed to in the current plan.
Yeah, that's what I remember seeing.
This is to give a bit more of a scale. If you think it would be helpful, it would be very easy to include both types of charts.
Well, what I would wonder is, of that first category, where is it? And what zoning, in what zones are those undeveloped areas?
Hmm.
Are they mostly in residential or are they mostly in industrial or commercial? I don't think they're in commercial.
A lot of that was probably where the technology corridor is being built out.
Well, that's what I'm thinking is, because that's a huge, of that landmass, that landmass south of Five Mile Road.
Right.
Is a large percentage of that, I would think.
Yeah, I would think so. And the pumpkin farm.
Huh?
And the pumpkin farm.
And the pumpkin farm, yes. What would you say that pumpkin farm is, 10 acres?
Maybe.
I don't think it's any more than that.
Yeah. So, for example, St. John's, if I remember correctly, that's zone residential.
That property, it's strange. That's very unique. It's zoned the Technology and Research District. I'm not sure, I think it was zoned that way in order to be eligible for the PUD.
Okay, so that site is counted in that category on this diagram, then?
That site, I believe, is counted as the institutional.
So institutional are like religious sites, governmental sites, schools?
Mm-hmm, cultural.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is the use of the property separate from the zoning.
Yeah, because that's the only other big parcel that's semi-developed, you could say.
Right.
That could someday, you know, could be developed into a way that is zoned right now.
So does the acreage add up?
Yes. The acreage matches.
What a coincidence.
I'm just doing the math in my head.
Yes, it's the same. Just some of the categories have, you know, the land use has been converted. Like, for instance, even this recreation and open space, there were a couple acres lost that have changed from the Phoenix Mill, right? That has gone from open space to now a commercial use.
So is Heinz Park considered institutional or open space or recreational or?
Open space and recreational, yes. And these are the same categories of land use that were in the 2015 plan. So we didn't adjust the categories themselves. We just looked at how the land use has changed and then what that difference is. That way we can compare apples to apples instead of trying to make sense out of two different things.
Other questions or comments?
I would say in closing that the data suggests what we all, I think many of us assume, which is people are working out of their house more than ever.
Mm-hmm.
With only 1% in office. Is that a plus 1%?
Yes, less than 1% increase in office. But home occupations and work from home has become increasingly popular.
But you wonder if that means people are going to want houses that have a little bit more space for home offices, you know, for home offices. You wonder if that's going to be a long-term impact, particularly if you've got two people working from home in the same house.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the other question or challenge is, people that work out of their house, a lot of them are going to want to see, and a lot of communities offer more accommodating ordinances because it relates to many topics.
Mm-hmm.
We haven't really addressed as a township, a lot of those topics of working out of the house.
Right. I suspect there will be a number of, you know, land use changes as a result of COVID. Even just thinking about hotels and, you know, large office spaces and retail, there may be a change for some of that. We've had interest, actually, in converting one of the hotels in the township to assisted living facilities because the hotel is looking for, you know, a new use.
In the past, when we've had discussions about working from home, they've centered around, are there deliveries made to the home? You know, typically things like UPS or FedEx truck is...
And they take to employees?
Right. And, yes, if you have employees or you have customers coming to the home, is there adequate, you know, off-street parking? Those have been some of the issues when we've had this kind of discussion. But now I think this trend is basically, you're just, instead of going to the office, you're really, you're working for someone. Those other times, it's usually you're self-employed consulting.
Yeah, that's a different scenario.
Pardon?
It's a different scenario.
Yeah.
Different use case.
Right.
A lot of this is complaint-driven. It's not a problem if someone complains.
Right, right.
Yeah.
You know? It's different than running a, having a hair salon in your basement. It's a very different thing. Or ad agency or something where...
Yeah.
Where you have employees.
Employees working in your home? Guess so, yeah.
Now, there's one incident of that of home on Ann Arbor Road that does have that. But you would never know, it's an insurance agency. But the parking is sort of hidden away and they do have a small parking lot there for the employees and the occasional customer that comes in.
Right.
Is that Mimic you're talking about?
Yeah.
And they're tucked back in the woods.
They are.
Sorry, are we done with that?
I think we're done with this. Do you have something else?
Well, I hesitate to go back, but why does this motion say the planning and zoning part of July and the one we got is August? Why does the agenda call for July and this one's August? Shouldn't we be talking about August? Didn't we approve July in the August meeting?
Yeah, I believe you did.
I think, I think maybe it's just that when they redid the agenda, they didn't change July to August. My guess would be. Would that make sense to you guys? So I think we should change our motion to August.
Yeah, modify the motion so the person that made it was, Kendra, do you make a motion to amend your motion, I guess?
I make a motion to amend my motion that the planning and zoning monthly report was for August of 2020 and not July of 2020.
And the second was John's?
Second one.
Okay. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Sorry about that.
Good housekeeping. So on this, you're asking for a motion. What are we motioning on? Is this still a work in progress or is this the final product or?
No, this is still a work in progress, correct?
So do we, do you need a motion?
I don't think you would need a motion this evening just for discussion.
So what is the timeline for doing the master plan?
So, right now, this is the first, like, phase where it's the data collection and the demographics, existing land use. There's some natural features data that we have as well. And then we'll be presenting that to the board, I think, October 12th or 13th. And then after that, we'll be looking at doing some public engagement and getting feedback from residents and business owners, like the goals and objectives of the master plan and discussing the future land use map, if there's going to be any changes to that. So this step is really laying the groundwork for being able to educate the public about where the township is at and then find out where the township would like to be headed in the next five, 10, 15 years.
So what's going, I misunderstood, didn't hear you properly. What's going before the trustees enter October meeting?
Well, we'll be presenting the demographics and the land use.
Oh, this presentation that you showed us today?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's another discussion and reaction kind of a thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, so I expect the planning commission to have multiple discussions in the next couple months about those goals and objectives and the future land use map. The Historic District Commission, the Environmental Commission will be reviewing and having some input into the goals and objectives as well. Because currently, the plan doesn't touch on those two subjects very much.
So when do you hope to get the final draft completed?
We hope for adoption either early next year or maybe even late this year.
You know, what I get out of the last chart is that, other than the diminishment of agriculture acreage, that the industrial and TNR are roughly the same. It's just that there's a shift between them. And, of course, a lot of the industrial has really got technology and research in there. So there's not that big a distinction really between them, the way that we're attracting people. But other than the agricultural going down and a slight shift in the technology and research and industrial, you know, and the population, I don't think has significantly changed through that period. So that, it all makes sense. But that's the only thing I can get out of that chart. Everything else is pretty much the same.
Well, you look at the demographics and the land use and see, you know, what we think about it, how does that drive future planning decisions? As much as we can influence the developments that come in, I mean, somebody wants to come in and, I don't know, build, bring in 500 jobs, you're not, it's pretty hard to say no to somebody like that.
Laura, on the population numbers, I believe that when the prison was open, those folks were counted in the population, so there was a decline. So there's a little bit of an offset because when they closed the prison, then those people were no longer residents of Plymouth Township. And they, so when it showed kind of a level, there was actually a growth.
That's interesting.
But it showed flat. I can't remember what year.
That would have been 1990 census, I think.
Yeah.
That was, it was after 2000, wasn't it, in the prison clause?
Up to 2000?
Right around there, a year or so later.
That would have cut back on housing units as well.
Multi-tenant.
That's a good point. I'll look into the history of that if it's included.
Well, if we're done with this discussion, should we move on to the covered porch pergola standards discussion? Last call for any comments on this? Okay. All right, Laura, you want to lead us through that?
Certainly. So this is just a presentation regarding the accessory structures and rear yard encroachments. We have reviewed a number of comparison communities and their definitions of such structures and how they treat them in regards to setbacks and square footage and maximum height. So first, I wanted to go through the township's current standards. So accessory buildings in residential districts, anything that's attached to the roof is considered part of the principal structure and part of the current variance issue that has been reoccurring. If an accessory building is not attached to the principal structure, then it must be at least 10 feet away from that structure or have, per the building code, the fire-treated wall. All detached garages and detached accessory buildings combined shall not occupy more than 7% of the total lot area or 650 square feet, whichever is greater, and cannot exceed the total square footage of the residence. So they must be smaller in proportion. For detached accessory structures, they can be no closer than five feet to any side or rear lot line, excuse me, and a building permit is required. And then there is a chart in the ordinance that deals with permitted yard encroachments. And really, this blue section here is the point of focus regarding patios and terraces, unclosed and unroofed platforms. So in the rear yard, no closer than 20 feet to the rear lot line. But if they are attached, which often the building department says that they are attaching it to the roof of the principal structure, then that must adhere to the regular setbacks of the residential district.
So attached to the roof but not to the building?
Yes, basically, it's like where the gutter would be. They would be attaching it to that portion of the structure.
So if it's below the gutter and it's still attached, that doesn't count?
No, they would still count it as being an expansion of the principal structure. a, an expansion of the principal structure.
If it's attached at all?
Yes, yes. The, the building department just made mention that most often they're seeing that individuals who are wanting to install the pergola or covered structure are just attaching it to that band along, along the roof portion where the gutter would be.
I wouldn't agree with that, but that's okay.
Okay. Well, that, that was the information that was given by the building department. Currently on the screen here, you'll see there's some additional language from the ordinance regarding decks, patios that are greater than nine inches above grade can encroach into those required residential setbacks, but they cannot be enclosed or covered by a permanent roof structure. And then I underline this next sentence because I think it's valuable in this discussion in that for front porches, those can encroach into the required front yard and they cannot be enclosed, but they may be covered by a permanent roof structure. And then this next page details the current definitions that we have in our ordinance. And there is a distinction made here between an enclosed porch and an open porch, although, and a structure. But the ordinance currently doesn't define a roof or really what constitutes the covered versus uncovered. And you'll see in examples of other communities how they define such features. So the first example is Canton Township. And they allow for pergolas, arbors and trellises in any yard except when an integral part of the deck, and then it must adhere to the required setbacks. And they consider garden structures such as pergolas or trellises which have open wood-framed roofs, which may or may not be lattice, are not subject to setbacks. So in this, they are not considering those types of accessory structures as covered and would not have to meet the setbacks for the rear yard. In Dearborn, such accessory structures cannot be closer than three feet to the rear property line. And the maximum height is 16 feet. And the amount of square footage that they can have is scaled to the size of a lot. So this is just an example of two sizes. There are others that they quantify in their code. And then they also have a standard that the use of any pergola or gazebo type accessory structure cannot be used for storage purposes. And then I think it's interesting that their ordinance differentiates between pergolas and gazebos and then seasonal pergolas and gazebos. And this was a recent change that they made just a year or two ago to their ordinance, where seasonal are more temporary structures and they're only permitted to be erected from March through November. And they have a smaller maximum square footage. And they do not require a building permit, whereas other pergolas and gazebos do. But even the pergolas and gazebos that require a building permit can be located in the rear yard, just no closer than three feet to the property line, provided they meet these other standards. Then Farmington Hills, they did not provide a definition for these structures, but they say that accessory buildings such as gazebos may be placed on porches, decks or patios located in a rear yard setback. So they don't give a minimum or maximum that it can encroach. But overall, those accessory buildings cannot occupy more than 25% of the rear yard. So it may be a rather long deck or it may be a rather wide deck, but it cannot occupy more than a quarter. And then the maximum height is 14 feet. And then Macomb Township, they define these structures as covered patios, gazebos, pergolas, pavilions and similar type open air structures are permitted. They cannot be permitted in the side yard setback and they cannot be closer than 20 feet from any rear property line. The maximum height is 12 feet. And then they have a number of additional provisions in their ordinance. These structures cannot be enclosed with walls. The structures do not count towards the number of accessory buildings that are allowed on the site, but they do count towards the maximum lot coverage. So if there's a, you know, 25% lot coverage in that residential district, this would be counted as part of that. Northville Township provides for garden structures such as a gazebo, pergola, arbor, other similar structure that's attached to a deck or patio. Again, this is not permitted in the side yard setback. This is something that is very standard for regulations-wise and is not permitted in the townships either. But then the garden structure may extend beyond the 16-foot permitted encroachment into the rear yard setback. So this is very similar to what the township currently has. We have the 10-foot allowance for the ZBA to consider into the rear yard setback and they have 16-foot. But these garden structures may encroach even beyond that. They don't provide for a maximum height, but they do limit the square footage of those structures at 150 square feet. And then the last case that we looked at was Wickham. And they define this as decks or porches sheltered partially or wholly by a permanent or temporary canopy awning, metal lattice pergola or any other material. This is considered covered by their ordinance. These structures cannot be any closer than 20 feet from the rear property line. And the covered structures are not permitted in the rear yard or the side yard. They have a sub-provision in their ordinance that allows for covered and enclosed structures that are only attended for use during three or four seasons of the year. So they specifically cite sunrooms, screened porches, enclosed gazebos. Those are permitted to extend into the rear yard setback, just not the last 20 feet, which also is a very common provision that we've seen. So those are some examples of how other communities have treated this issue. We did look at the city of Plymouth. There really was no relevant information from their ordinance that would, would help shed light on this.
Have you discussed this at all with the building department to see what issues that they've had to face and, you know, helps us to put in perspective what might be some solutions to those issues?
I, I did have a meeting with the building department and their, their concern is that we currently don't define the covered versus uncovered and unclosed versus enclosed. And there's a number of new accessory structures that they're seeing requests for. So pergolas that have automated roofs that can open and close, not just a permanent, you know, wood frame that will remain open to the elements. Screened, or screens on pergolas are also a popular request that are motorized. So these types of, especially regarding screens, it's a lightweight construction method. So a foundation is not required for those, just the 42-inch posts like on a, on a, as a deck would. So it's unlikely that that would be converted into livable space since it doesn't have the foundation. And I think that is one of the main concerns of the building departments is that in another couple of years down the road, that these spaces would be converted into living space if they have the foundation. And then that would be a permanent extension into that rear yard setback. So I think they're looking for direction from the commission. Also, I think the ZBA on how these should be either more closely regulated or better defined in the ordinance.
So let's start with the, at the, the initial problem. And that is, did you look at, at these entities and compare their rear yard setbacks with our rear yard setback?
They do range between like 50 and 30 and the con-
There was a lot of them, because I looked at Northville, North, the city of Northville, Northville Township, Canton and Livonia, and I didn't find any at 50. I found them at 35 and 40, but I never found, I didn't find any of them at 50. So it seems to me that that's where we start with the problem. And then we go beyond it to this restriction, which I couldn't find in any of their ordinances of this 10-foot situation where we couldn't go beyond that which makes that 40 feet. And the ones you're looking at, there are, a lot of them are 20 feet. So I think, I think that's where we, we need to take a look at our ordinance and see if we aren't overly restrictive.
That's a really good point, Commissioner Pratt. And something else that the building department and I discussed is that the 50-foot residential rear yard setback is standard in all of our residential districts, whether it's the R1 or the R1H. But in the cluster housing options, those can go down to as far as 30 feet. And, you know, one example that the building department brought up is Andover Forest, right? Which was, you know, that was, that was approved in 2014 or 15, I think. So it has been some time. And those, those units only have 30 feet. But the building department is now getting requests to extend the deck into that 30 feet. So it's even, the, the enjoyment of a backyard and the use of that outdoor space is, is different for that homeowner versus someone in a traditional sub or someone who has to abide by the 50 or 40 rear yard requirement. So there's a bit of a discrepancy in how we're treating rear yard setbacks.
I was just going to ask you, do you have any reaction or thoughts on?
Well, yeah, I, as I said the other day to Dennis, I, I didn't know we were going to get into these auxiliary structures. To me, the, the largest problem, I don't think we've, I'd have to look again. I don't think we've had many variance applications about structures. I don't, I'm not aware of any. Of course, I've only been on since '17. But to me, the, the issue seems to be or the issue with, that the building department is most concerned about are things that are being converted into screened-in porches and sunrooms that are attached to the principal structure. And it seems to me, at least with my cursory review of surrounding communities, that Plymouth Township is very much more restrictive as far as rear yard setback is concerned. And I think that's where we need to, to look and see if we can't make it more convenient for our residents to change or to add, add to their, their rear yard and turn out the lights and change the ordinance to, to make it easier for them to, to add such a structure if they so choose, chose. It just doesn't seem to me that we're, we've brought, brought these zoning ordinance into current usages. I think we're, we've, we've left the, that section like we have many sections in the zoning ordinance the same for many years and haven't even addressed it.
We have that, the guy in, on, I think he's on Leywood, Leywood, that came in, he went, came to the ZBA last month and then came and spoke to the board of trustees.
He's on Woodley Way.
Woodley, yeah.
Yeah, Woodley Way.
Yeah.
He's in Trailwood too.
Yeah, yeah.
And as I said the last time we talked about this, I'm not sure that, I, I wonder if we can't adjust the zoning ordinance to a lot for, for situations like that. We didn't pay our electric bill or what? Because I, you know, I think we could, we could make an accommodation there that the zoning board of appeals right now has no ability to make. Because the, the zoning ordinance is overly restrictive in that regard, I think.
Well, I think we have to ask ourselves, what are we trying to prevent from happening? Is it expansion of potential living space beyond what the setbacks, you know, require?
Well, and/or are the setbacks too strict? Because as I say, I didn't, I don't remember seeing any of the ones that I looked at that were 50-foot. They were either 40, 35 or 30 in the regular zoning ordinance for regular residential. So it seems to me that we're, we're well above any of the ones that I saw.
Do these other communities specify or do we specify what the lot coverage should be of, of your living space?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yes, that's often a common standard.
So that might be some, some, a different way perhaps to look at it? Is that a potential solution?
Well, I think if, if the township was interested in reducing that rear yard setback to 40 or 35 feet, then having a lot coverage standard is one way to make sure that your neighbor isn't building a Bigfoot home as you would and, you know, blocking out your enjoyment of, of sunlight and not having it be in like keeping with the character of your neighborhood by tearing it down or building too many additions or whatnot.
Yeah, we did have a discussion, you and Kendra have been here a long time. Remember, we had that discussion about Bigfoot homes and
Oh, yeah.
Certain areas of the township where that's, you know, potential problem.
I think our zoning ordinance carries that restriction, that it can only cover a certain percentage of the lot.
Yes.
And so I, I don't propose to change that, although I'm not sure I've ever seen a, a request to, to be something bigger than that. And, and all I, all I'm saying is that, that whatever they add to this, I can't imagine whatever that addition would be, would be to increase the, or to, you know, abridge that restriction. I, I can't imagine that happening. Because typically, you're, you're, what we've seen is additions that go out- Because typically, you're, you're, what we've seen is additions that go out into the backyard and are, like I say, sunrooms and things like that. They might, you know, there might be, I think the one, one we had two months ago, they were actually building, increasing the size of the, of the house to accommodate a, another bedroom unit. That was over, let's see, I got to point the right direction, over this way. Yeah, on south of Ann Arbor Road. And I think that's all I've ever seen. And even that, you know, they're going to build a thing, increase the size of the house all the way across the back of the house. That wasn't going to infringe on our percentage of lot coverage. It didn't even come up in the discussion. So, yeah, I would propose that we take a serious look at, at changing, adjusting our rear yard setback so that we could allow folks to have, not that they wouldn't have to pull a permit, because they would, especially if they're going to do a, a foundation of some kind or a house, or a, a room that requires a foundation, they're going to definitely have to pull, pull a permit. They're just not going to have this restriction that they can't go beyond the 40 feet. And I can't imagine, you know, our, the deck, a deck itself can be within 20 feet of the rear, rear yard lot line, right? So, that's, that's a 20-foot rear yard setback. So, I think somewhere in between that and 40 feet is, would make more sense.
Yeah, my only concern is that, I know in the past, the township has always wanted these open spaces, you know, especially the western side. And I would hate to see, I, I can see decks, I don't really have a problem with the, with the decks. I, I'd have to just think through it a little bit as to, you know, what burden are we, you know, preventing a homeowner to do what he would like to do to his house, but still maintain, you know, a certain character of the community? It's a delicate balancing act.
Yeah, I'm sure, sure it is. I just, I think there's somewhere in between there that makes sense. I think the current restriction of 40 feet seems to be excessive. That would be my assessment of it. And if you go back to Bob's discussion, this, as we all know after our 75-minute presentation by this poor man on Woodley Way that we got at the last planning commission meeting.
He deserved his day in court, so to speak.
I got it confused, you're right. That was, that was it. Yeah, he, well, he, he was at the zoning board and then he came here.
He came here.
Because at my suggestion, I said, "Well, let's show folks what we're talking about." And really what we're talking about is, in his particular case, he wouldn't be encroaching on anyone, because all he's got is a creek behind his lot and a bunch of woods. So, you know, that's why I think somewhere in between there makes sense. And what that is, I'll leave up to-
Is there-
-discuss and move forward.
Is there a way of giving the zoning board additional discretion when that situation occurs and somebody is not abutting another yard and, and residential structure right behind it?
Another way to-
And then you can use logic and just look at each individual situation?
Well, I, I think, quite honestly, Keith, my thought process is, I saw nowhere on the four zoning ordinances that I looked at, nowhere anything like this 40-foot restriction that we have in our zoning ordinance. So that, you know, if we set a certain zoning setback, as an example, let's make the zoning, the backyard setback 40 feet and then it can't go beyond X or the 20 feet, right? Then, then you don't have that issue, that issue or, or, like I said, to me, it seems to me that the township's ordinance is overly restrictive at 50 feet. Now, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't see it in the four I looked at, I didn't see 50.
Typically, we see 50 feet in more rural communities, so like the Wickham example, I think, or South Lion might be another example where that 50 feet is in certain residential districts. But certainly, when you get into, you know, even more suburban, suburban and not even urban, you see the, the 40, 30, even sometimes 25.
Yeah, 25. And so, I, I think that's another evolution that you're seeing, is that Plymouth Township used to be rural and it's not rural anymore. So, I don't think the zoning ordinance has been brought up to our current, the current characteristics of our, of our population. And I think it should be. So, I think we should look at that issue and, and see what we all feel collectively might be reasonable and move forward with that.
Well, I think the 50 feet was there, they still want to have this open space, have this very, you know, so I wouldn't, I agree, we're not rural anymore, we're more suburban. But they wanted these wide open spaces. But I have another kind of back way to look at this again. So, this very brief discussion I had with Mark some weeks ago, he was explaining to me, some guy wants, he has a pool or is going to put a pool in and he wants a pergola, you know, next to the pool.
Yes.
So, what are the restrictions on swimming pools with the setback? Do they have a different set? And then if someone did want to put an accessory structure like a pergola, how does that all tie together?
So, that was one of the questions that the building and I, building department and I discussed. And there are setbacks in the building code for, from pools for accessory structures. And it depends on the structure. The, the objective really is so that you don't have someone climbing on a structure and then jumping into the pool as a hazard. So, a pergola could be, and there are cases in the township where a pergola is adjacent, you know, in proximity to the pool. There's a conflict right now in the building department on whether a pergola is an enclosed, or is a roof, or it is an open structure and how that should be regulated. And because the zoning ordinance doesn't define either structure, you know, that, that's another layer onto this discussion.
Yeah, this is a real mixed bag of stuff. That's what I'm trying to get at. It's, it's just, how do you find a, you know, an easy solution, you know? But we could, could the ordinance be changed that under certain circumstances, the ZBA could have discretion? Like some of the ordinances leave it up to the planning commission discretion on some matter in a, in a development?
Yeah. Frankly, I've never seen an ordinance that has the stipulation that the ZBA can't grant it, or is limited in its powers to grant. And because the, the intent of the ZBA is, is to make that judgment call. So, to me, that, that's a bit of a red flag. And I think the building department does want Kevin, the township attorney's opinion on that.
And that's, that's, that was my point exactly, is that, that it seems to me, as I said, when I, I looked through the zoning ordinances, I saw none of them that had any restriction like that on what, what could be allowed by the zoning board of appeals. So, I find that kind of unusual. And I think something that needs to be changed, no matter what. Now, now, now the question comes, well, what do we change it to, or do we just eliminate it? I mean, none of the four that I looked at had any, any stipulation like that whatsoever. And so, it just seems like to me, that's, again, the zoning ordinance, a portion of the zoning ordinance that has not been looked at recently and needs to be addressed.
Well, what does the commission think? You would just want to mull this over a little bit, think about it, and we'll revise it, revisit it? Is there, is there, are you looking for a quick solution on this or?
No, I, I think any, any decision that the township makes should be strategic and, and careful.
Yeah, I wouldn't be looking for a quick solution. That's why I, when we did the motion for this guy's thing on Woodley Way, I made it, I pushed it out six months to postpone his application. So, we have the time, as I said to him at the time, we don't do anything quickly. We want to have a measured approach and make sure we're taking into consideration all the ramifications of what we're proposing. And I think that's only reasonable.
So, he, so as I recall, he's going ahead and building his deck, but he's not having the-
Yeah, right.
-structure. I, I think he's having it designed, but not installed.
Not built, yeah.
Any, any thoughts on this one? Or just come back and we'll think about it? Maybe you can do a little more research or?
Yeah, I think tonight was a good discussion and, you know, leaves everyone with a bit of food for thought. And we will be having an October meeting, so maybe we can continue this discussion and I can provide some examples of those rear yard setbacks then.
Yeah, I think seeing the rear yard setbacks from other communities would be an interesting thing to, to see.
Okay.
Not easy to find.
And Laura-
They're all written differently.
Yeah.
Laura, can you send this presentation to us? Can you email it to us?
Yes, I can.
So that, you know, I know myself personally, I'd like to study it a little bit more. I think that would be beneficial as we kind of consider some solutions. No.
And Laura, is our October meeting the second Wednesday?
The October meeting-
Because of the election?
Yeah, that's right, I was going to ask that question. According to the calendar, it's on the 14th.
Right, it is on the 14th, at 7:00 PM.
Which is the second.
Second.
I don't know why that is, but.
I think it was a conflict maybe with the election and training or something like that perhaps.
Yeah, needing the room for the equipment and everything as well.
So, oh, I didn't have that. So, we're meeting on the 14th in October?
Correct.
Okay, well, good to know.
I can send a reminder.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I noted that when I, because I was talking to my wife, I said, "Well, the third Wednesday in October is," and then I looked at the calendar and I thought, "Oh, no, we're meeting on the second Wednesday."
Yeah, I just changed. So, are, are we done with whatever you have prepared for us?
I think so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, concerns, questions from the commission? Okay.
I'm over adjourned.
I have a question though.
Oh.
Laura, I know you're involved with the tree distributions, the Wabasta trees?
Yes.
How's that going and have they all been landed down?
It's, it's going well, yes. They're looking, Wabasta has finished the landscaping at their site and it was inspected and all accounted for. And then next week, they're looking at starting the plantings around the township. And they're going to start first with that triangle piece and the majority of the trees there.
Haven't some neighborhoods taken possession of trees?
Oh, yeah, so there's also a residential tree planting program that the township was able to do this year. And there are about 70 trees that individual residents, for street trees in front of their homes. And then a couple HOAs, like on Powell Road, you can see there's 10, 10 new trees along the right away there. They were one of the recipients, that HOA of the-
Along Ridge Road as well around the corner.
Mm-hmm.
North side of Powell?
Yes.
Yeah, they had, they had locked there over the years. They're, they're very nice trees.
Yes, yes, they are. Elm, sugar maples, and tulips.
Laura, do we need to receive and file this report with a motion on the agenda? The residential accessory structures?
It could, it could be a receive and file, that's fine if you wanted.
Do you want to make that motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we receive and file the memorandum from McKenna on residential accessory structures and rear setbacks?
Is there support?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Ostendorf to receive and file the covered porch pergola standards. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any other comments, concerns, questions?
I move we adjourn.
Okay, is there support? Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to adjourn the meeting at 8:30. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.